Oh, good afternoon, everyone. The hour being three o'clock, I'll call this regular meeting of town council to order this twenty seventh day of September two thousand twenty one. We have an agenda before us here so far. Is there any errors or additions or deletions? No? Okay, would someone like to move we adopt this agendas submitted?
Yes, your worship, I would adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Hill. On favor, Carrie. First item on the agenda in the minutes of the regular council meeting of September thirteenth for consideration, would someone like move we adopt those as submitted?
All of the minutes, your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Bates. Any errors or omissions to be noted? No, all in favor of the motion. Carrie, thank you. First item on the agenda, we have a delegation, Alicia Fox from the rural community, or I'm sorry, the Alberta Rural Health Professionals Action Plan. Come on up. Turn that mic on too, Alicia.
Perfect.
So I did print out some pieces unless you guys already have those in front of you. All right, I will give these to you and you can just kind of hand them around. I'm just gonna take this because it'll be a lot easier to hear me. All right. So while you're passing that around, I thought I would quickly introduce myself. My name is Alicia Fox. I am with the Rural Health Professionals Action Plan and I am the Rural Community Consultant for the South Central Zone. So I actually moved to Innisfail at the beginning of July, absolutely loving it here. I brought down my three kids and my husband. My husband's currently finishing up his masters as a in counseling psychology with Diane Kuglin over at Standing Stones. And my three kids are in love with the schools and having a really great time here. So prior to this, I was up in Smoky Lake. I was the rural community consultant up there. But when the opportunity came to be down here where I grew up in Didsbury, so it's kind of a homecoming for me. I said, please don't hire for her position. I'll come down there and you can hire for mine. So they did that. So the Rural Health Profession Action Plan, if you're unfamiliar with that organization, we were started back in nineteen ninety one, but at that point they were called the Rural Physician Physician Action Plan. So we are a nonprofit funded entirely by the Alberta Ministry of Health and we are governed by a board of directors. We do sit at various tables across the province and whether that sitting at the table means that you collaborate with them or actually sit at regular meetings. They, there's all kinds of different organizations that we do partner with there, senior AHS government ministry officials, RMA, and we do, well, AUMA doesn't actually sit at our board table. We do sit with them and make sure that we do have that that voice there. So I work for the Community Development and Engagement Team. The first page that I handed out there is just a brief overview. I'm not going to go into all of the details that are actually on that sheet. But it has some information about our team, what we do, some of our our goals and the resources that we can bring. And on the on the back there is a map of our different of our different zones. So you can see I'm there in the South Central Zone. And my area that I support communities in goes north to Castor Coronation Consort and Eckville and east to Hannah and Oian and then down to the Sanino, but we don't actually support communities through the Calgary Metropolitan Area or Edmonton Metropolitan Area because our definition of rural is anything that's under fifteen thousand people and outside of that main zone. So our approach is an asset based one. The base basically what we want to do is we want to use what is in a community and what its strengths are and highlight those. Rather than trying to develop new things, we want to look at that as an asset based. We're a team of seven. We do have the one position up there in the Northwest, far Northwest currently vacant. We're looking for a person to fill that. But within our support network, we have a hundred and fifty rural communities represented. And we reach more than three hundred and fifty thousand rural Albertans. And that does include close to five hundred volunteers and whether those volunteers sit at an official committee level or whether they are just engaged in attraction or attention within their community. They, there's quite a broad range of people that we we are connected with. And so what we do is we focus on the attraction retention of healthcare providers in rural Alberta. So on the third sheet there, he'll notice and sorry, the year in review one is the second one. It's just a bit bit of an overview about what we did, even despite COVID. We had some some pieces there that we were able to reach out. Of course, had to pivot to do some virtual stuff, but we we were able to do a lot throughout that and hoping to move back into in person. We'll see how that goes. But the third sheet, there's the attraction, retention and recruitment. So we don't touch recruitment. That is a an administrative process through AHS or Covenant Health, depending on the community. But we do kind of sandwich that in the middle. So there's attraction on one end and retention on the other. And if you're already familiar with that model, basically it's a continuum, right? So you continually attract, make your your community stronger, more engaging. If students are in your community, you can connect with them. If locums are coming in, sometimes they're just trialing the community, seeing what's what they may want to put down roots in later. All of that counts as attraction. The second that can healthcare provider steps into your community and says, this is where I'm going to practice. It transitions to retention and that retention might look like appreciation awards such as the Rhapsody Awards that Innisfail Community Partners in Action just got. It might look like professional development opportunities and we do have funding for that for various healthcare providers. It might even look like making sure they're plugged in and touching base with them at that three months, six months, twelve months, twelve year point. Are they connected in their community? Do they feel like they still belong? Are they still that fit? And so that's what the attraction retention side of that looks like. It's hard sometimes to separate the attraction from the recruitment. But we we don't do any of that administrative process. The one piece that I wanted to highlight there in the next page was that Building on Success Study. If you're interested, I can send you the full forty page document, but I thought you'd probably appreciate just a two page highlight instead. There are three pieces in there that I just wanted to draw your attention to for the for the Building on Success Study. So what we did is back in two thousand nineteen, we took a look at why certain communities were so successful in their attraction or attention and what made them that way. We found that there were three categories. There was the professional, the community and the family. The professional was even a work life balance. If they come to work and they they feel included there, I mean, that's not something that we have a lot of control over. But we could say offer those professional development activities. But the community and family, those are where municipalities, community members, that even the average show on the street can get really involved in. If the spouse is happy, if the family is involved in the community, if they're plugged in, if they've found their volunteer community that they really want to be partnered with, if they want a faith community and they found that, if they needed daycare, if they, you know, all of these pieces. Make sure that they're there and that they know about them. That, you know, when the community has something going on, that maybe they extend a hand and say, hey, you're new to the community. We recognize, you know, you're working at the hospital there. Would you like to come out to this community dinner we're having? So these are the community and the family pieces that we found made communities very strong in their attraction retention. So there's some examples in there, some highlights that you can kind of take a look at. And please ask me if you need some more details on those because I'm happy to provide a little more in depth examples on any of those pieces. But in terms of RPAP, what we can bring to the table is their rural capacity building workshops and information sessions that we hold. They're open to you folks, open to anybody within the community. This month, we just hosted one, but there are two more. It's a Tamarack Institute. If you're not familiar with that, it's a Canadian based organization in community development. Absolutely fantastic. We host these sessions, information sessions once a month. They're one hour, they're free. And they they just touch on some of the things that really matter to Albertans, whether that's something like ACT Alberta we hosted or the Rural Mental Health Association or this Tamarack building. So there's two more of those. And we do have a conference every two years. We're really hoping that happens next year. We also bring community specific information back to these tables, meet regularly with AHS Community Engagement, Medical Affairs, Talent Acquisition and these partnerships that we have. And if you have something specific that you're interested in, we also have examples all across Alberta of communities that are in a similar boat because every community is different in their needs and what they have. But we can say, you know, this community had this happen and they were very successful in this in doing this. And so it's just that anecdotal application of knowledge that we can provide from examples all across Alberta. And then we have that strong social media presence with our Marcom team. We have a Rural Health Week with appreciation activities that we highlight. Events and programs to support learners at various stages. We have the Rhapsody Awards. So there's all kinds of different pieces there that we can kind of plug in and bring to the table. This is another piece that we have. It's a toolkit. We just expanded for another module. So if there is something that you're looking for, for example, one community didn't have anywhere to start for terms of reference for a committee. And we said, great, we have three examples for you. Feel free to modify these to whatever you need. Another committee, community said, you know, we have some people in place, but they don't know where to go for attraction retention ideas. He said, that's, that's fine. We have two pages of attraction retention flashcards. Feel free to apply these in whatever way you need to in your community. So the, these are some of the things that RPAP kind of has available at our fingertips. We'd love to share with you. My ask today is not very big. It's really just to consider in Innisfail, I know that there are some people who are interested in continuing that attraction retention work. And I know that in many communities, it's been invaluable to have that municipal backing, whether that looks like forming of an official committee that is municipally based, or whether that is having someone just go to meetings on occasion, four times, three, four times a year kind of thing. With a community based committee, or whether that's even just looking at how attraction or tension might look in Innisfail. It's just to kind of consider what the next steps might be because I know that there was some momentum there with the Rhapsody Award and I really wanted to see if we could capitalize on that forward motion. So all of that I'll leave in your laps, but feel free to ask any questions of me.
Any questions, Council? One thing is a little bit in my mind shows the the situation at Sundry. Were you familiar with that? They went through quite an ordeal there with their professionals and
Is it the Moose and Squirrel Clinic?
I think they've got a resolution there of some sort.
Yeah, um, yes, we're definitely familiar with the the challenges that are facing many committees, communities and Sundry is one of them. Sundry is a community that I work with now. I was up in Smoky Lake when some of the things were were sort of being back and forth. They do have a very strong attraction attention committee. I think that kind of helped smooth over some of that pieces there. But Sundry is, yeah, they're they're a really great community. I very much enjoy working with that committee, but yes, we're we're familiar with some of the challenges that they had.
Certainly a good example of how you can assist or get involved.
Yeah, I know they're they're quite active there. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, your worship, and welcome to Innisfail, Alicia.
Thank you.
And I'm certainly glad to hear that you and your family are adjusting, which is great. A couple of questions. One, I'd like to get a little more information and the link that you have with regards to attraction and retention and how it relates to Alberta Health Services. I understand that they're the ones that grow out and do the recruitment. But do you have a a close relationship with them? Because I I was through this in a previous municipality a number of years ago when we were trying to attract doctors to our community. And we found that at times it was, the relationship was a little arduous between the municipality and Alberta Health Services. And I was just wondering with your, your group here, is it, are you fairly tight with?
We have definitely had the opportunity to improve our our chances to speak with AHS. They are learning more about us and we're learning more about them. But for an example, I did meet with Medical Affairs this morning, one of their their physician resource planners. We were, we meet fairly regularly. I mean, this wasn't, this was for a little bit south, some of the communities of it south, but we do regularly meet with them. And they are, yes, our relationship there is much improving.
Okay. Well, thank you. And one supplementary question, your your worship, and where's your office?
At home.
You you're working at home?
Yeah, I work right right at home. So in the basement.
Thank you. Thank you.
My, the the official office though for RPAP is in Edmonton. But most of our employee, I think there's sixty percent or seventy percent, most of us live in rural Alberta. They try to plant us for relief because that's where rural people would understand.
Councilor Berkeley.
Your worship, through Alicia, when we met you, you talked about a career day that you tend to hold in schools. Could you tell the rest of the council about that? Because it's not just about physicians.
Absolutely.
I thought that was such a cool idea.
Yes. So in two thousand seventeen, we did transition to the Rural Health Profession Action Plan and that transition looked like understanding that attraction or retention is so much more than just physicians. To make a strong healthcare team in a community, you need to support the entire team and the healthcare providers that make up that team. And in turn, those healthcare providers also support the physicians who are coming in and they they have that strong team base. So the the Let's Go Rural is a whole umbrella of activities. Unfortunately, we've had to do a lot of that virtually. They used to be called Skills Weekends that we used to do, but we've now expanded that. So what used to be called Skills Weekends and now Let's Go Rural experiences or events. There's high school ones and there's post secondary ones. So the high school ones look like a grow your own opportunity. So you have these these high school students, they come out for one day. They see what's available in my community. If I were to pursue healthcare, what does that look like? It might look like starting out as a healthcare aide. It might look like diving right into post secondary after school. But what are my options available to me and how can I maybe come back to my own community and practice here? And one really cool piece of that are the skills stations. And so within those skill stations, they they have healthcare providers that sort of show them the ropes as to what it is. They get a hospital tour. They get to try some suturing on pork hocks. They, we have stars come out when they're available. The stars is often a little more targeted to the post secondary, but we have had them come out to high school events as well. And they have EMS and they do the spinal stabilization and some of these different pieces. And they get this hands on look at what healthcare might look like. And that's just a one day thing. The post secondary is a little bit longer. Usually it's two days. These students from either the U of A or UFC come out and they we are hopefully extending that out to regional colleges as well, but at the moment it's been primarily U of A and UFC medical or nursing students. And they come out and you just kind of roll out the red carpet in your community and say, look at all these things that we have. If you choose to come and practice out here, look at some of the pieces that we have, the healthcare infrastructure. These community gems might take them out and kind of do a really cool little farm tour, let's say on a on a bee farm or something in the area that's, you know, really key to your particular community. And they also incorporate some of those skill stations for for nursing students, for example, they don't get to do suturing. At least not in some of the years that we have them out here. And so they get to try that out and see what they, you know, and they get to see that medical students who are coming out and going to be physicians get to see what it's like in a rural community where there's such a focus on that team based approach to healthcare and why all of these pieces are so important. And then they go home on a bus and, you know, with all these experiences from the community. So it's, you know, put them up in a hotel and there's a community dinner and there's all kinds of things. Best part about those is that RPAP funds the majority of that event. And for the post secondary experiences, the only money shall out for the community, other than, you know, the community, community volunteers is a community dinner. And so you just host them for this dinner and any kind of special things, but usually the little special things showcasing outside, taking them to a hockey game, whatever, a lot of times those can be minimal cost. So it's a, it's a fairly great opportunity for communities to be showcasing what they have.
Your worship, just one more question. So Alicia, we, we know many communities are having challenges and Innisfail is certainly no different with shortages. Where, how do you see moving forward to help rectify that situation? Like, would it be eventually maybe forming a community committee? Whether it's municipal led or or community led and and are you seeing success in that even in this environment that we've seen the last couple of years with this contentious relationship?
I think that with with the actual recruitment process, I mean, we get calls from even, you know, different communities or talent acquisition for nursing and they say, you know, can you help us? And we say we can absolutely partner and connect you in with the community. Unfortunately, we don't have a magic wand. However, that continuum of attraction or attention where you start out and you say, we're going to start now and we're going to be looking at post secondary students, we're going to bring them in. Or if there is a learner, you guys actually do have accommodations in Innisfail. We support accommodations for learners who come in. So there are a couple of learners in your community right now. And if you were to say connect with them and say, oh, yeah, I know you're here. Here's a welcome basket. Here's a card when you leave and say, think of us. Those little gestures as you go, they don't solve the immediate crisis, but in as they go, they, you know, word gets around. It does start to make a difference and then you have those pieces in place for the next time it comes around. Another success would be to connect in with locums and see if they're well, if they're into the community, welcome them in, see where they're at. Some of them are trialing out and saying, you know, maybe this is a community I might, I might think about practicing in. Yeah. So there there isn't a quick fix, but it is that if you start now, you can start to kind of get that momentum going. And then the retention piece of who you have right now is really important to put into place as well because you don't want to lose the guy, the people here. And I know that it's such a great community to showcase. So I'm sure that there's a lot of opportunity for that. So it's kind of a, it's a nebulous answer. It's not direct. But it is the, it is a really great time to start a committee. It won't be a quick fix.
Any other questions? I think Alicia, I did kind of to clarify my mind on on the approach that you're doing or having is, are you working like well received by the Medical Association as working parallel with them and locations and
We have a really great connection with a lot of the like AHS.
I can see where that would have to be.
Yeah. So we we've really valued those partnerships in those conversations. We meet regularly either by Zoom or our leadership and then we're able to connect in. So no, we we definitely value that relationship and and, you know, if you need to connect with your physician resource planner in the area, I'm happy to help you do that. They're really keen on connecting in with communities right now because they have started to really understand the value of of what communities can do on that side to support them. We we want, they know that we're not there to give them more work. We're there to support their efforts in every way we can. So
Okay, any other questions? Well, if you're anything you'd like to sum up or?
Nope. The only thing that I would mention is if you have any questions or comments or anything like that, my contact information is on the map. So the second page there and you're welcome to email me, call me anytime. And I know that you have a municipal election coming up, so I wish you all the best for those who are rerunning and I look forward to connecting and with with the new folks at the table as well. So yes, and thank you everybody for your service to Innisfail.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much.
Thanks again. All right. We have another delegation. I guess is there any comments anybody would like to make in this regard to the Alicia's presentation? No, pretty straightforward. Great information to know. Anyways, our next delegation, Kyle Kazowski. Kazowski, how's that?
Not going to help you.
Okay. We'll just go by Kyle.
Yeah, thank you. And there's also Daryl. So it's Kyle Kazowski. You had it. And also Daryl is is he'll zooming in, I think, maybe on audio.
Can you hear me now?
But if he's not. Yeah. Presentation before you go to presenter mode, do you remember the last slide? I think it's hidden. I just unhide it. See, just.
Hello, can you hear me? I can hear me now?
Uh, so do I just go?
I'm here.
I can do a lead in to making a worship of council. So this is actually, I wouldn't say a long time in the making, but it's been a lot, a lot of work. Started with the relationship with AUMA, Kyle's representing AUMA. And of course, Daryl's to train, representing train virtually, but a while ago, we talked to AMA about some work they like to do to consider helping their game of services with with energy. Which all that Kyle, there may talk about that relationship between AUMA and Train. But the work of Train and AMA, of course, Megan and her staff has led to this report. We're quite happy to share you, you this information, Council, and just get your perspective. Obviously, there'll be important topic with next council, but we felt due to the significance of this work and amount of time and effort put into it, it's really required in justification to your work as well as as the elective official. So again, Kyle, thank you. I think you already put yourself in a position of some very tough questions. Where you're handling the mayor there. And of course, Daryl, Daryl's met us before too. So I'll put it over to you, Kyle, and well, maybe Megan. Do you have anything, Megan, first?
No, nothing really to add from that. Just, yeah, we've kind of checked in with council throughout the year, I guess, as we've gone through this process, entering the agreement with with AUMA and then moving into this investment grade, grade audit portion. So yes, it's exciting to see the, see the results on some of the projects that we might be able to to move forward with.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And I'm just going to do a audio check on Daryl. Are you there, Daryl?
Yes, can you hear me now? Can you hear me? No, I guess not.
I can go anyways. So Okay.
That's one, two, three.
It's hard to keep that guy quiet anyway. So this is working on pretty good. Okay. So anyways, thanks for the introduction. I'll just, I'll take it from there. The AUMA has partnered up with Train. I think you've had some introduction to the partnership. But Train is an implementation partner for energy efficiency, energy management, as we're calling it. And when we look at energy management, we are looking at ways of modernizing buildings using, using an operating cost like your utility cost. Hey, there's, they're looking good. And and using that to to pay for some capital upgrades. And so Train has gone through and worked with with the team here on some buildings to come up with, with really a menu of of options that you can, you can look at deploying on your buildings in Todd.
I'm just going to interrupt Kyle. In fairness to Daryl, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yes.
We can hear you. I think in respect to Daryl, he should be part of this conversation.
I'll just tell stories about, I grew up in Edmonton and Shire Park. I spent all my summers in Pinoka at a at a farm west of Highway Two and and learn how to, how to pull cows, calves out of cows with chains. That was my, that was my upbringing.
Extremely qualified.
Hurry up, Daryl. Let's get Daryl on. Daryl, are you there?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time with the audio. Can you hear me? I had to try calling in.
Volume on. We can't hear him. Daryl, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
No, he's not. Ken, he's not here. Check, Daryl.
No, I can't get on. Heck, no, I can't get on. Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Oh, perfect. That's much better. Sorry.
I'll see if it's getting, I'll see if it's getting picked up by the mic.
Let me uh, try dialing the number here.
Anyways, we can hear you. This is great. If uh, if uh, I don't know, councillors and mayor, can you, can you hear?
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like we're good to go.
Oh, good. Okay.
This is, we got multi-media going on.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
So, ready to go? Okay. All right. So today we just want to give a quick overview of the energy management program and where we're at in the process. We've kind of covered that. We also think it's always important to check in on the, the goals that the council set and objectives along with administration. Um, show you some of our findings, just some examples. Uh, there is a full report and everybody I believe has access to that or has a copy of that. Yeah. So that's a lengthy report. So we're just going to try and cover a summary here and then be, be a resource here for you um, uh, to talk about today. And then what next steps would look like? Okay, so uh, I've, I've been jumping slides. I'm supposed to be clicking it. I'm gonna hit a couple. Can you just maybe advance to, or do I have to turn this on? If you click it forward twice, it'll be catching up and making a wishy-wishy signal. And then next, yes, we'll stop here. Okay, so preliminary audit uh, study was done. And so it was more of a review with some broad strokes of how buildings would respond and, and act if uh, if energy efficiency measures or renewable energy was applied. And now we've gone down to the investment grade audit. So that's what you have. Now with in terms of a forward port. And so you're at the stage now where we're looking to go through the list of measures, not exactly through it today, but you go through it. Uh, administration can go through it and then develop a project for construction. So let's see, the objective here is to, to bring forward a you know, a large meaningful project that's going to update a number of the buildings in the community. Next slide. So here are your, 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 your goal. So if you just want to take a chance to review them. Uh, but you wanted to reduce escalating energy costs and reduce your carbon footprint. You want to provide technology that allows you to better manage your infrastructure assets. Provide for capital plan relief by implementing existing capital plan items in this project. So that means maybe you had something scheduled three years out. Makes sense to bring it forward now and included in part of this um, project. Maximize the eligibility of potential grants and other funding and financing that's available. And for Innisfail to be a leader in innovative energy solutions and the use of renewables. And I think that story that you're going to be able to tell after you go through a project like this in, in alignment with many of the other exciting things that we've done in this community, um, it's going to be a good story to tell. Next slide. Okay, so, energy lighting, uh, sorry, lighting and controls. So ECM stands for energy conservation measure. And so, you know, one of the recommendations uh, is to look at upgrading lighting and controls in, in a number of the buildings. Uh, this is going to have without incentive of payback of about six years. And it's going to meet that goal of reducing your escalating energy costs and reducing your carbon footprint. And so you've got meaningful uh, savings that can be achieved from, from lighting and controls. If you do have any questions, just flag and I'll, I'll, I'll try and best to take them.
I do have one. Thank you, Kyle. On the total savings, does that include the money that we would save due to the carbon footprint? Is that the, because we're going to be paying a carbon tax, right?
Yes.
Is that part of that?
Yeah, so we've worked in, it, it does account for an escalation in, in the increased price of natural gas. Well, this in particular wouldn't cover that necessarily. It covers the increase in electricity that's anticipated by the systems operator for electricity. So to answer your question, escalation of, of energy cost is in this, in that savings.
So one could assume then that the savings would even be greater when you take in the carbon savings. Would that be a fair assumption?
For laying and controls, um. I mean.
I could jump in here, Kyle.
Yeah, go ahead there. I'd say probably.
Yeah, great. And so with these numbers, these are based on today's utility rates. Um, so there's the carbon is in these, but it doesn't have the escalation factor. When we get time to their returns and our pro forma, when we have, look at our draw rate returns, that takes into account an escalation rate that you know, we'll get into as we go later. But for the first, when we identify these particular ECNs, the savings numbers is based on today's cost. So I hope that helps. Yep. So the savings will be greater.
Good. Thanks for correcting me. That's good. Right. Uh, next slide. So uh, vending misers, just a fun little addition. It's not, it's a low cost uh, change that will change so your vending machines operate uh, better in, in, in buildings, just an example. But that meets the goal of reducing escalating energy costs and reduce your carbon footprint. Not, not a big uh, big item. Um, next. So mechanical upgrades, there's a lot of furnaces that are uh, in line to be upgraded and uh, we're suggesting do that now with this project and the payback is um, is long on these, but they're, they're easy to bring into the project because what it does is it meets that goal that you have to provide for capital plan relief by implementing existing capital plan items in the project and it addresses deferred maintenance in the future.
And I would add to that as well, Kyle, is when you, when you look at these and the payback does appear uh, fairly long, furnaces tend to be a long payback. This doesn't take into account a, a capital injection that would be required to replace these aging and, and old furnaces. So this is strictly from energy savings, but we have budgeted, there's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was budgeted to replace a couple of those furnaces uh, that was in a long-term capital plan. So that doesn't take into account is reducing those costs by a hundred and fifty, which would bring that payback, payback down significantly.
Yeah. So you were going to spend a hundred and fifty thousand. It's already in the plan. And so we're just saying, bring it in and look at it that way. Solar. Okay, so solar on buildings is, is also being looked at. And this leads to Innisfail being a leader in innovative energy solutions and the use of renewables. And so I think this is a part of that story that Innisfail is going to be able to tell. So we've looked at that for a number of buildings and, and there is, um, it, you know, it, it looks like there also be some incentives for this to improve the, um, the simple payback on them as well. Controls and system commissioning. So this is ways to really uh, bring the, the building up to uh, uh, a modern state of operation. You know, you'll have Todd on his iPhone all the time, looking at the buildings, watching what's going on, knowing where, uh, when the ice machine is being rolled out and getting ready for his hockey game. He'll be able to prep uh, better for that. It is really, there's some very cool things you can do with buildings. And this is bringing modern uh, controls and systems into the building so that operates and you'll have a really good way of measuring and verifying the energy savings in the building as well. And part of uh, the offering is, is to um, bring in uh, trains uh, intelligent services. So this gives you some stuff you can bring up to your websites, put in, in lobbies of buildings and really communicate to the community what is being done in the buildings. A lot of the a lot of the work we get into, um, it's not as visible as we want to be. It doesn't communicate to the community what's being done, but if you can have a better way to tell that story, you know, the, the train's intelligence services is one of those ways to help do it. So this is some, yeah, go ahead, Daryl.
Yeah, I was just going to add to that. It, it, it provides advanced analytics on how your buildings are operated. And it also does predictive maintenance. So it'll actually tell you when a piece of equipment is operating out of parameter and it knows you should go check it, uh, see what's wrong with it, why it's operating out of scope or out of parameters. Um, so yeah, there's a lot more to it, the analytics, there's uh, predictive maintenance, predictive failures. It'll show you when something's still coming down that could possibly fail, but it should be looked at, some attention taken to it. So there's a lot more to the train, the intelligent services software that provides better management of your assets.
Okay, so the next, we're going to move really into grants and financing. Um, but before I go there, does anybody want to stop and just chat about any of the technology that's being recommended?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'm not the technology person, but I'm just curious, have you identified a significant potential for solar on the office here where we already think we like, where we led down a semi efficient path or what, what, what is happening that, because these are only like three, four years old.
So I'm sorry, if I heard the question correctly, we're looking at solar PV limited on the arena because of the structural integrity of the roof, uh, but expanding out on the current club and also on the town administration building. Yeah.
My question was specific to the town administration building. Is there, is there significant potential there? Because a couple of us think that we made a significant investment there when it was built.
So the addition of solar on the building, um, might have to park that, I might have to come back to that.
Actually, I can help uh, culture base. Um, so Daryl, if you can hear me, uh, so we have solar PV on the town administration building, but um, I believe the report outlines that it can be rejigged, modified to, to better serve um, um, the town. Maybe can you explain what your findings were regarding the town administration building?
And, and I could also, like, I should, I, I've worked in solar for 20 years, so I might be able to also give just some perspective. When was the town admin solar put on the building?
Uh, about three years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're really a part of this uh, public scope.
So it sounds like it's mostly just adding, expanding to it. I don't think you have to, what's on the roof is good solar.
Again, my question was the potential, are we gaining thirty percent? Potentially or twenty or fifty or eighty? Like, is it a big potential increase on the roof of this building?
Okay.
We, we'll have to get back to you about.
Yeah. Yeah, we may have to come back to that. Okay. Okay, we're going to go on. So now, uh, just in terms of incentives, you might have looked at some, but um, but in Alberta, uh, there's a good funding guide for municipalities that's provided by the municipal climate change action center. Um, Federation Canadian municipalities also has incentives and infrastructure Canada has a large fund. It's got five years of funding, but one point five billion, uh, almost one billion just for retrofits. Um, the other half billions for new buildings. And so there is, there's a good amount of funding out there that is being brought to the table from governments and agencies of governments. A key part is that greenhouse gas emissions are, are usually tied to that funding. So some examples uh, that we've kind of brought forward in, um, to look at the MCC program, you probably look like solar and and rec program offers some large baskets of funding that um, is being waitlisted, but Megan got some news that's probably going to be um, positive for an outcome for Innisfail to get the access to that funding. Uh, and then you could look at infrastructure Canada grant as well. Um, for some of the funding baskets that are available. Next slide. This is a little detailed, maybe doesn't show well, but um, but it is just showing that we do have some eligible grants for a lot of the energy conservations that we're offering and suggesting for the building, that that could be part of the project. Okay. So in terms of where we think, there's, there's always, there's always carrots. So there's carrots out there with the baskets of funding that are available, but there also are some pain points that are coming um, with carbon tax. Uh, we're looking at by twenty, thirty, about twelve dollars a gigajoule. And AUMA, like when we forecasted our energy cost for uh, natural gas, it's looking very stable for the next, you know, seven years. But we're getting out to a point where you can see that uh, we're going to be, that's going to be a notice of impact. So that will be that's a consideration how council and administration deal with um, the carbon tax. So the next slide we show, this is from Alberta Electric Systems Opera and where they predict energies going. What's interesting about this is sometimes predictions are, are off, but I just got note that year to date, they're accurate on where the cost of electricity is. And when you put that into average cost, this is wholesale. So we call it the pool price. The pool price is usually averaging about sixty eight dollars, sixty five to sixty eight dollars. Historically, that is just where it stays because of competition in our marketplace. And the year to date, it's been a hundred dollars. Uh, and so their prediction is in anticipation that electricity costs are going to be going up as well. Uh, so that's something to keep in mind, Todd.
Kyle, yeah, I wouldn't mind going back. What I think this is quite relevant to the requirement and the, the need to potentially, well, council to invest. So yeah, just see the steps moving up to twenty, thirty and onwards. I think this is tells the picture so, so easily of what, why we would, why we're doing this work. Yeah, just it's so plain to me why you'd want to update our facilities in a way to, to be more conscious, set targets. And be responsible, obviously, but if you could just maybe hang on to this slide for one second. Is there any questions or comments in what you see, council?
I, I guess, isn't natural gas on a real tear right now for price going up? I know we are going to be locked in soon, but the price of natural gas on the commodity exchanges.
Yeah, I really couldn't speak.
Which will make this better, I guess, but I'm just saying it, it, isn't it going up?
Like on the forward contracts that AUMA is purchasing for then turning around to retail, this is the pricing we're using. So lock in a good stable price with your AM retailer.
But yeah, you're right. Culture base, you could also show us a line of what's, what the market dictates and it's certainly higher than what is demonstrated due to our program with AUMA.
How long were we going to lock in? Erica was four years.
Okay, I think we can move forward if the council look at.
Uh, just to go back a slide. It's more just a pic, pretty picture. Just one more slide. I don't know, sorry, go forward. Another. Oh, I've got it hidden. Never mind. That's why you can't see it. Let's just go straight to the numbers. But what I was going to say is what you do now is, is, you know, as a, uh, with administration, you want to go through that, those options and really look at how you can build that into a project that's meaningful and say, hey, it is the capital project we're going to bring forward. And, and so that's the next steps. Um, so we've got a financial analysis here. We've put together some numbers. And so these are a summary of financial metrics that can be considered to support energy management projects. Um, in the models, utility costs escalated eight percent per year. And they've been modeled out for fifteen years. So we, we've sort of thrown uh, a, a few out there and some are more important to, to than others to depending on the person who's looking at it. But net present value being positive is always a, a strong indication that it's a good capital investment. It meets your uh, your, 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 your discount rate base. You can look at savings to investment. That's, that's a, a ratio. So you look at the total saved over fifteen years, add that all up and you, you put it over your, your total capital cost and that just gives you a ratio, which is two and a half. So it's sort of saying in two and a half years. Uh, and then like return on investment, that's uh, that's got your total savings over fifteen years. And then you put that over top of your, your capital cost for that fifteen years. And then you get that return on investment. Internal rate of return is one of those numbers that you can, you can apply that to compared to like the stock market or something like that. It's, it's a more of a, a fair um, a percentage when you want to look at it from a financial perspective. So those are just some things to keep for consideration. And then we've got on the other side, when you look at um, the addition of potential incentives that we, we, we estimate will be available, um, things just get better. No, it wasn't uh, hidden. I just had it in my wrong order. So project selection, the implementation of this project, before we go past numbers and finance, did anybody want to stop or grab any of those? They're good. All right. So then your next step is your project selection and really defining what you want it to be. You know, we're looking at, at, it could be almost ninety thousand dollars per year in energy costs and savings, probably about a two hundred and six kilowatt uh, of additional solar to town buildings. Explain. Choose the project finalized, the contract arranged financing. And so bringing debt into it is an option with the guaranteed savings. So Train brings that to the table and they say, we guarantee uh, actual energy savings and you can take that to a bank and then they'll say, okay. Actual energy savings and you can take that to a bank and then they'll say, okay. We we know that you're gonna save whatever it's thirty thousand, eighty thousand, in this case eighty eighty nine, and go back to that number, I think it's. Eighty eight thousand dollars a year and you'll be able to take that and it's bankable. And that's, that's where we're at today, and so we're bringing this forward for report, and then the last slide is just a picture of Innisfail in the future. Or right now, I guess, because of you already got the solar. We got the wind over at Hellkirk.
Yeah, I guess I guess I'd just like to add is Kyle is is one of the things, this has been a bit of a journey.
Your time, and thank you for receiving this. And I think he's hearing me in the background, but I'll I'll. Yeah, I'll just leave it there as as for information for you, Daryl, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Nope.
Oh. Can you hear me better now?
Yep.
Yeah, so I guess just what I wanted to add was, you know, it's been a bit of a journey that we've had, it's been a lot of fun working with with the town. You know, between Megan and Trish and Todd, I mean, they've been they've been great supporters as we've gone through and developed this project. You know, we've been working on this particular program with AUMA for about a year and a half now. And it's been a lot of fun trying to find ways how we could save the town energy. Great to work with it, loving guys in the cell, so forward to moving forward. And I guess the next the the next step in the process is basically take what's in the investment grade audit. You see what fits, what meets your objectives, that's your decision, and more or less pick a scope. And the next deliverable after after that's done, our deliverable would be a formalized proposal. It shows you, you know, what the scope of the word has construction schedule and everything else based on that, as well as the financing options that we would bring to the table.
I have a question. So this report has been complete during, you know, going into an election here in a few weeks and. There's probably a lifespan to this report, what what is the desired? Response of AMA train for the talent to move ahead with with this work and. Potentially allocating resources to investing. Into a project.
Right, exactly, so so there is, you know, there is a bit of a shelf life, as we all know, that with inflation that prices seem to be going up on it, just about everything. We managed to be able to. That's not just all, I mean, if you're looking at eighty nine thousand dollars a year in savings. We find that the sooner these projects get initiated, the sooner you start realizing those savings, so you know, with every quarter, you lose twenty thousand dollars, you don't move forward with a project. Twenty twenty three thousand dollars. And and once the scope is selected, that's gonna take a little bit of time. We come back with the with the proposal, the schedule, we gotta we gotta get to all the logistics, the ordering and scheduling. So and then the construction, you know, could take up to nine months, maybe twelve. So it's really gonna be over a year away before you even start realizing the savings, so that's why we try to make everybody aware that. You know, it's important to move forward quickly, because you can see the precipice that we're facing with the cost of carbon and gas as well as. As those electrical cost increases, it's just gonna get worse, like if I look at with the escalation rate of. You know, an inflation rate of two percent, which is fairly low and conservative. And even a cost of money and discount rate of four percent with an escalation utilities of eight percent. Which is again, I believe, a little bit conservative, we saw from the graphs, but in even a year ten. That's eighty seven thousand dollars in savings is all of a sudden a hundred and seventy five thousand. So, you know, as I as I cost escalates and when you do any cost escalate, your percentage of savings remains constant. So if you can say twenty percent of your costs.
Thanks, Daryl, if I could continue your worship. So clearly that the town has options on on financing. What I would and the savings from the energy is allocated. To that investment, so if the town would take a dementia for X project. The savings of that project is guaranteed through train, so it's really, it's not a a deficit cost to the town, it's. The risk is basically on on train for that period of time for that project.
Yes, absolutely, it's the bank considers it a good debt because, you know, we say we're gonna hit. Another option that we've seen some clients take is they extend the term a little bit. So that they can actually acquire more, actually have positive cash flow. And that's other option they have by extending it out, the coster is saying that the guarantee gets extended a little bit longer. And then you can take a little bit of positive cash flow every year, because you don't need the full value of the savings to pay the debt, because you've extended that debt over a longer period.
So what, if I could, Mayor and Council. I could suggest to you, so looking for your feedback, but I think at a minimum today is if you could provide direction. To perhaps accept this reports as information and direct administration to proceed in. Researching the financing options. Or did it accordingly to future projects, so. Stop there, but what I mean is that the town has a few options for financing. So we can take the venture, we can work the train. And there's probably other ways I can recall offhand, but if you could direct us to proceed with that evaluation. We'll present this report, so tune out new council. At that time, we'd be prepared to provide overview of the financing options if council wishes to proceed.
You know, it makes a lot of sense, I can't see council making a lot of. You know, financial decisions until we get more information, so you know, this would be the next step in my mind. Proceed. But is at this point in time, any more questions, is someone? Perhaps. Inclined to make a motion that we instructed administration to proceed. Council Harrison.
Okay, thank you, your worship. I'd like to make the motion that we. Accept this report for information and to direct administration to investigate and report back with financing options.
That covered.
I I believe so, Mayor and Council, I'd certainly look at Megan, Kyle and Daryl, if that's appropriate. From your perspective as the the guiding forces with this process.
I think so, I think that gives us the ability, there's a couple of the grant opportunities that we could even. Start moving forward with those applications. I think for council, I'm not sure if we highlighted it, if we were to do all of the. Energy conservation measures that train recommended, we're in about the one point five, one point six million dollars is the the project total. And there may be a couple that we decide maybe we don't want to do right away, so that that's sort of the ballpark in terms of the. The capital costs to achieve the savings. That were outlined.
And of course, accessible. Access to grants is gonna have a big impact on that.
Yeah, and especially the MCCAC ones, it sounds that the sooner we can get our application in the. In the lineup, the better chance that we will have our foot in the door before the money runs out.
Okay.
I think that's a good path forward as well.
Hear the discussion to that effect. All in favor of the motion. Carried. More information and carry on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel Bates, I got an answer to your question. The the addition of solar is gonna be doubling the solar on the building.
Thank you, Kyle, and thanks, Daryl. Yes, sorry, you couldn't quite make it work on your side, Daryl, but we'll certainly talk. Both of you with new council once again, and as we move forward with this, with these conversations.
Okay, great.
Very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kozowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
You bet, thank you. Right. Interesting, all these discussions about energy, but in one little project we got here, we still can't get any answers. Anyways. Next on the agenda is CEO's report.
Thank you, your worship, first of all, I'd like to introduce to you Kara Cochran, who's the town's executive assistant. Kara is comes highly in high regard from a neighbor in municipality, a little bit larger. To the south, so it's always good news to bring in from some of our peers. Kara is. Has worked for the town previously, I'm happy to say that we've recruited her back into the organization. And it's just starting her second week on the job, is doing a great job for us and. She's here to support Mayor and Council, CAO, and covering holes in the organization that require attention, so. Looking forward to work with Kara for for years to come.
Welcome.
Along with that, Mayor and Council, a few things to cover in the CEO reports. Couple of things to highlight in the recommend recommended motions is to to consider the actions recommended by the. Community Economic Development Advisory Group recommendation for some work on engaging our businesses. As well as then more of an engagement on on the public side. Also asking council to consider to cancel the October fourth AMP, which we don't have. Anything further to provide to you on the fourth, but we do require a council meeting on the twelfth, I believe it is, on the Tuesday. Which should conclude your your term on council, so we have to keep you around right to the right to the end, so. So just going through the report, council, the. Economic Development Advisory Group met on September the sixteenth. And the minutes are attached within your your agenda pack within correspondence. Two motions came out of that meeting, one was to recommend to council to proceed with the business retention and expansion survey engagement program. Jointly with the Innisfail Chamber of Commerce. And that the advisory group recommends to council to proceed with the economic development engagement plan. So at the meeting, the very. Really first formal meeting of this group, the group appointed Patricia Born as the inaugural chair, which would be a great leader. And we're meeting with with Patricia tomorrow to set her up for success as the as the head of the lead of of this committee. The committee made it clear within our preliminary conversations leading up to the meeting, that's weekly task focused. Not just so much philosophy, but we need, we want action is what the group stated, so. Administration took that under advisement and came prepared and presented to the committee a couple ideas to to move. The the group, the economic development focus forward. The conversation to administration and our support factor five group showed just a just a picture of data that could be utilized. To help set more purposeful strategic action, so Eric Burton, the factor five. Demonstrated some of our our strengths of our local economics and only as a as a really a snippet with other data. That can be utilized again to make concrete, purposeful strategic plans and utilize our resources to their best ability. The initials recommendation from administration was to to initiate debris survey, the business retention expansion. Survey in partnership with the chamber. So the gathering of data along with the gathering information from the current businesses through the brief survey. Will allow the town to allocate available resources to specific actions. Connecting a brief program allows to really to gather information. And provide a current community assessment, which engages businesses on what has happened to them today. And projected future, immediate future. The brief program is again joint effort with the Chamber of Commerce. Besides that of the brief program engagement survey is then to follow up with the community stakeholders with that data and with that, the results of the brief. Survey, this would include different stakeholders within the community. To include that environmental and social agencies with that of economics. So again, looking for council support, maybe some questions if you have any to to. Support the actions recommended by the Economic Development Advisory Group. I attached slides for council consideration that were discussed in more detail with that action group. Besides that, information for you, the primary administrative focus for the CEO. As of recent has been a supervisor's managers meeting we had this morning. Which were advancing a new performance appraisal system, which is more target focused, associated with. Upcoming council strategic priorities. So it's a really good meeting, we did review a couple of policies as well. The number two here, the Alberta Transportation Highway Facility Management Agreement, so administration did meet with Alberta Transportation. Transportation, we all could be coming back with new to new council, asking if this work on that work regarding highway fifty four. Throughout the western part of our our community will be a priority to undertake that assessment, that work based on on highway safety. So we'll leave it at that regarding that that vicinity management agreement, knowing where you're at with your. With your term and that'll be one of the discussion to see if this is a priority for council moving forward. It is administrative task. Oriented. So if you if you understood that priority, now we can, but it will be a priority that next council will be will be. We'll be working towards, so certainly take your questions regarding my report.
Questions?
Your worship through to CEO Becker, can you expand a little bit on the highway fifty four and the? I guess the context of the meeting and you say, like. Is that joint work, is that the town to take on work, like how does, how would we get that initiated?
Yours was because we really is to actually present you that information in more detail of that agreement. It is all that, as you mentioned, it would be town administrative focus with that of AT and likely some consulting. Yes, please.
So I guess the process is somewhat initiated. Alberta Transportation is going to have the the intersections. An evaluation done on them by their consulting engineer, so so that's not a cost on the town. And then we'll proceed through this highway vicinity management agreement is the tool that Alberta Transportation has identified as the best. Way for us to work through conversations about if there are intersection upgrades required. When would those happen, especially if they're gonna happen in advance of sort of traffic count and and engineering qualifiers? So, yeah, so we're very early, we're reviewing the templates that they've provided us for those agreements and what kinds of. You can sort of determine how involved or you want to be with that process, or we're doing that research right now.
Your worship, by through to Director Jenkins, so this will advance regardless of. What we're doing right now, you're going to keep working on this, because I think it's very important and, you know, considering the the time. It would take for Alberta Transportation, everything, I think we should definitely keep moving on this initiative and doing all we can to. Find out more details and.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, because directly into Megan's point is that we just met with AT just last Friday. Thursdayish, so we just have the reports and the draft agreement, so it does take a ministry of analysis. So regardless, that would be common to council. And we'll hit new council, we're not withholding that information for for that time period. And as Megan alluded to, there is work being done on those respective intersections.
I certainly agree with councillor Barclay that urgency is is there that we shouldn't. Just because there's an election happening, we should still stay on track, because I'm sure. Next council is gonna support that. And outcome anyways, hopefully. All right, any other questions of the CEO? All right, do you want to look at a considering a motion to? to approve of the active advisory group, P R E, survey engagement program?
Hey, I'll make the first motion that council approves the Community Economic Development Advisory Group recommendations to proceed with the Business Retention and Expansion Survey Engagement Program.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, Carrie? Thank you. Now we're looking for a motion to approve of the Economic Development Advisory Group recommendations to initiate the Economic Development Plan.
Your worship, I would make said motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, Carrie? Thank you. And I guess the final motion to approve of the C E O's report.
There's one additionally worship for consideration of counseling the October 4th agendas.
Oh, right. Okay.
Your worship, I'll make motion that we cancel the October 4th Agenda and Priorities Meeting.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion? Carrie. All right. Now, would someone like to move we adopt or accept the C E O's report?
I'll move that we accept the C E O's report.
Thank you, Constable Bates. All in favor of the motion, Carrie? Okay, moving up to the council action control plan, if there's any discussion there. No discussion? Someone like to move we accept this for information? I would so move your worship that we accept for information. Okay, thank you, Councilperson. All in favor of the motion, Carrie? And the next is 5.3 Emergency Coordination Center, E C C update.
Thanks, your worship. I'll just be brief on the E C C as Megan will be reporting more specifically for recreation facilities further on in the agenda. The E C C has met the last few weeks, really largely on facility planning and staffing expectations. There's been some coordination, of course, with the election coming as well. So those large public gathering programs are making sure that those expectations and logistics are planned out. We're also doing some investigation within H R policies associated with vaccinations as well for both medical and first responders as well as town employees. So conducting that research as we speak. Yeah, and I think the rest council would be best suited for for Megan's report for their own on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Any questions of the E C C update? I guess we can accept a motion to accept that for information. Someone like to move?
I'd so move your worship.
Thank you, Constable Harris. All in favor of the motion? Thank you, Carrie. All right, moving on to N R F D regarding 2022 Parkland Regional Library Budget. Erica.
Thank you, worship. So yeah, I'm bringing a report for council to review and approve the Parkland Regional Library proposed 2022 budget. So the town of Innisfil has an agreement with the Parkland Regional Library to provide library services within the town. The projected 2022 budget submission is an annual process that has been developed in compliance with the Libraries Act and the Parkland Regional Library's budget policy. For 2022, there is a zero increase proposed to the municipality per capita requisition. However, in calculating the municipal levy for 2022, there's been a change in how our population is calculated. According to Parkland's master agreement, they are required to use the most recent population figure for the municipality as published by Alberta Municipal Affairs. The government of Alberta has discontinued the Municipal Affairs Population List and will now be using population estimates from the Office of Statistics and Information at Alberta Treasury Board and Finance. This has now increased our population number from 7,847 to 7,957. So this is making our requisition for 2022 to be $68,032.35. This does impact our budget with an overall increase of $940.50. So each year they do request that council consider the budget before a certain date so they can bring it back to their meeting. They they would like a response back by November 4th, so that any problems can be addressed at their board meeting on November 12th. So the approved motion that I'm requesting is that council approves the Parkland Regional Library 2022 budget.
All right, thank you. Someone prepared to make a motion to that effect. Support that.
I'll move the recommended motion.
Thank you, Constable Reber.
I have a comment and please. I did attend this budget presentation from the Parkland Board on through Zoom. And they have been working, I think, very diligently to maintain the requisition. They just moved into their new building earlier this year. They are doing some upgrades on computers and vehicles, but they're still managing to maintain this. So I think they're they're working quite diligently to keep their costs down. I would recommend that we approve this.
Thank you. Constable Bates.
I'm not sure who could possibly answer the question, but I'm just curious if other municipalities are also experiencing this shift to the population and did that. Is that on on average going up or is it just? Be interesting to know what we think our population really is.
So in their budget projections, they didn't show any increase due to population. So I think that I think they're anticipating that it will average out throughout their area, but I guess totally see that. Because their their budget number didn't change, so.
Have we seen any Mr. C E O, any response or results of that? Census that the federal government did.
Worship, I believe that's coming out in 2023.
Yeah, still. Okay, well, does everybody understand the motion? Any further questions? Not all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Move on to an R F T regarding Wild Rose Assessments.
Okay, so this report is for council to review and approve the pricing of the Wild Rose Assessment Services contract for year seven and eight. So Wild Rose Assessment is our current assessment services provider. We entered into an eight-year contract with them back in 2015 and it's set to expire in 2023. The agreement outlined costs for years one to five, but for year six to eight, pricing would need to be negotiated prior to the start of each year. So I've outlined one to five. Year six was approved last year for $80,220. And for this year, Wild Rose has just asked to maintain that same price for years seven to eight. So there would be no budget. No increase to the budget for years 2022 and 2023. Yeah, so I am looking for council to approve the price of the Wild Rose Assessment Services contract for October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2023 of $80,220 for each year.
Okay, thank you. Someone prepared to make a motion to support that recommendation.
Your worship, I would make the recommended motion.
Thank you, Constable. Any discussion? No, no, that's the question. All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. All right. Community Services, R F D regarding wheelchair and verbal report.
Okay, so I was really hoping that we would have a have a formal report for you for this meeting. But we're just, we're still working on the operational costs proposed for this for this project. So you can actually put the other tab up there, Cara with the van. So as council's aware, because it's been on the action control at the very top for a long time. The Transportation Committee has been exploring the procurement of a wheelchair accessible van as identified through the town's strategic priorities. The committee has explored numerous options and has determined that a small vehicle with a capacity of up to two wheelchairs or five passengers or a combination thereof would serve the greatest community need. The van would be the first choice for out of town appointments or other trips, which would allow the pace bus to remain in town on a more consistent basis. So the committee has received a proposal through Move Mobility, a company out of Winnipeg specializing in accessible conversions of this type. So a quote for just over $81,000 has been received for a P3 Ram Pro Master side entry van conversion. So that's the the vehicle on your screen. It could potentially hold two wheelchairs, one in front of the other, or you could have the two rows of seats in the back. So you could have two rows of two in the back plus the passenger seat. So you could have up to five passengers if you didn't have have the wheelchairs in the vehicle. The committees had lots of conversation around what would be the best option, everything from sort of a rear entry minivan Dodge Caravan type of vehicle. But really, as we explored the the demand and the practicality of of those vehicles have really settled more towards this this smaller vehicle, or I guess it's a bit bigger than a minivan, but but that this would be more practical, easier to use, easier to access for the patrons. So the town has received $20,000 from the Medically at Risk Driver Center through the University of Alberta Funding Program. And we've also made preliminary contact with the Lions Club, Rotary Club, and Red Deer County for additional capital support. These organizations have expressed interest and are awaiting confirmation of the vehicle specifications and operations to confirm financial commitments. So at our Transportation Committee meeting last week, the committee did make a motion to move forward or to recommend a recommend to council to move forward with the procurement of the vehicle. At this time, again, as I mentioned, we're just looking to finalize the estimated costs from the Legion for the additional operation of this vehicle. So that council has a clear picture of the budget implications, not just on the on the capital side, but also on the operational side. So yeah, really just wanted to bring this to council, let everyone know sort of where we've ended in terms of what type of vehicle and the and the cost of that vehicle. So if there's any questions or any other information that that council would like before we are able to come back when we have all the all the numbers from the Legion.
What's what's the availability, Megan?
So that's the part I missed actually in here. So we have reached out to our local dealers for for a similar vehicle Dodge and Ford has a similar vehicle, although the the Move Mobility, the ones that do the conversion, do recommend the the Dodge product. It's a front wheel drive as opposed to a rear wheel drive. There were a few other components of it that make it a little bit more suitable for the use. I went to Chrysler, they can't get one of these. They essentially said to me, if you can find someone who has one, that they would recommend doing it that way. So Move Mobility actually has four in stock that we could move ahead with. And it's about a 12-week timeframe for the actually doing the conversion work in the vehicle. So we'd be looking at the new year at the at the earliest likely to get rolling.
Thank you. Well, we have a situation here. I'm not sure how you want to deal with it. If you want to discuss it a bit first, or you want to proceed with a a commitment without funding in place yet.
I think for this week, it's just for information. If we get the information before the next council meeting on the 12th, we'd potentially look for the the commitment for the capital at that point.
Probably the best for sure.
Your worship, that's a question. Through to Megan, so or Director Jenkins. So in addition to the operating costs, et cetera, from the Legion, is there a a structure coming to of of any user pay? Or how how does it all work?
So the van would operate on the same system as the pace bus right now. So it's a $5 one-way trip for in-town services. And then it's a $30 to $50 is the the out of town trip with the bus. Again, we would look to utilize this smaller vehicle for the out of town. Because we do get the comment that sometimes the pace bus isn't available if it ends up being out of town for two or three hours at a time, taking somebody to an appointment. But yes, it would be the same same cost for per user as the pace bus.
Okay, so if this was used to, and and it wouldn't have to be a wheelchair type event. Okay, and so then within reason, I guess, to Calgary and Edmonton, the maximum charge would be $50, is that?
Um, they two to three, it's that's a maximum three hours that the pace bus was ever out of town. That was part of the agreement. So whether we would extend to those.
Yeah, because that wouldn't allow that wouldn't allow for any time there.
No.
Okay, just curious because I actually helped a person get to Calgary last week and I think we're still working on a volunteer drivers program to.
Yes, so Drive Happiness, I think Karen said she has five for for signed up volunteers that are hoping to get at least two more before we we roll it wide open for that Drive Happiness volunteer program as well.
Okay, well, look forward to getting the complete information. Thank you.
Constable, yes, your worship. So previously being on the Transportation Committee, I was here the the day that they did bring in one of these to actually look at. They had two versions that were parked out back and this is, I remember at the time that this was by far the more superior unit. And there is, yeah, there was, it was the the top shelf option. And I'm glad that we might be able to be able to secure one because it was very, you could just tell for the driver, for anyone that was on board. There was lots of room and there's lots of convenient features that would be very beneficial.
Well, I think what what Megan's looking for is a commitment from us in in principle. And to continue on at this point in time and and we'll get back to us on on further details, as long as this is the type of thing that we agree with the committee on. I guess is our biggest job today.
Your worship, just looking for accept this information, correct today?
Yeah, yeah, no formal financial commitment at this point.
Yeah, I will make that motion that would accept this report for information.
Thank you, Constable Barclay. All in favor of the motion, Carrie? All right, an R F T regarding Discovery Wildlife Park. Director Jenkins.
All right, thank you.
Point of order. I'd like to recuse myself from this issue.
Okay, so we're looking for a decision on development permit 21D 114 submitted by Discovery Wildlife Park for two accessory accessory buildings. So Discovery Wildlife Park has submitted an application for the construction of a 94 by 30 open front storage. So Discovery Wildlife Park has submitted an application for the construction of a ninety four by thirty open front storage shed and a forty by forty storage building to be located in the southwest or along the southwest axis to Discovery Wildlife Park. The structures will be utilized for the storage of equipment and materials for the operation of the park. Uses within this property are regulated by direct control by law fourteen seventy dash A four. Direct control districts are established to control and accommodate site specific development and ensure compatibility with adjacent lands. Council is the development authority for approvals under this direct control by law. And within the direct control, unless otherwise specified, the standards to be applied to the use and development are subject to the discretion of the Development Authority. So the land use by law provides a list list of accessible uses in this district, accessory buildings being one of those. So the structures are to be located as shown on the attached drawing. So I'm not sure if you can go to page fifty of the agenda there, Kara. The direct control district does not specify property setbacks. However, the development does comply with all the setback requirements of the Highway Commercial District, which administration is of the opinion is the most comparable district to this site. So the forty by forty structure will maintain a minimum ten foot setback from the south property line and an approximately thirty meter setback from the property line shared with CP rail. The open front building will be situated between two existing storage buildings. It's kind of hard to see on that map, but to the the north side of the road in between the two larger storage sheds, that's where the the open front building will be. So in addition, the direct control district states that development of the subject site shall be undertaken in a matter that does not interfere with Waska Sioux Creek and the retention of mature vegetation along Waska Sioux Creek. The proposed forty by forty building will result in the removal of vegetation between the access road and the creek. The building maintains an approximately twenty five meter setback from the creek and does avoid the slope of the bank for the creek. Administration does not have concerns about the development impact on the natural area or the vegetation on the site as a whole. It is our understanding that approvals through Alberta Environment are not required for this development. And there does actually have to be some vegetation removed in that area as part of the rail crossing agreement that Discovery Wildlife Park is working on too, just to keep their sight lines open. So they are going to have to do a little bit of tree removal in that area anyways. So the report provides an overview of some of the all of the development permits that have been issued in the last half a dozen years at Discovery Wildlife Park. At this time, administration is recommending that council approved development permit twenty one D dash one fourteen as outlined in the attached notice of decision. So if you can pop that development permit PDF backup, just the other tab on here.
Okay, is someone prepared to make a motion to that effect?
Your worship, I'll move the recommended action that we approved development permit twenty one D one one four.
Okay, thank you, Constable Bates. I know Alberta Environment is very concerned about proximity to Waska Zoo Creek or any other creeks, as long as those those requirements have been met. Certainly wouldn't have an issue with it. Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you, your worship. On the diagram, I only see one building, the forty by forty, our motion read for two buildings. Am I missing something on?
Yeah, so that's the second building we pointed out there between the two struck those two shops.
Oh.
Yeah.
Not very clear.
Yeah.
Okay, no, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Want to hope Mr. Reed Burger and the ribs? Okay. Director Jenkins. Have a would nineteen facilities update?
Yeah, so we just wanted to provide counsel with an update on how we're currently operating at various community facilities in response to the most recent public health measures announced to help reduce the spread of COVID nineteen infections. So we have been working to determine the most practical and effective ways to implement the recent restrictions while maintaining as many of our programming opportunities as we can. This has included numerous conversations and discussions with user groups to understand their challenges and their requirements with respect to being able to to utilize the facilities. So the Library Learning Center tenants, the Inisville Public Library and Hyundai Association are continuing to operate within the masking capacity and distancing requirements. Movers and groovers and steady steps have suspended their programming. And town scheduled yoga is moving ahead with pre-registered participants providing proof of vaccination. Currently, our joint use activities with the schools are on hold at this point. We aren't able to to move ahead with those programs at this time. For the arena, the arena is currently operating under the facility restrictions in place for youth sport, fitness, recreation and performance. This requires masking, symptom screening and physical distancing. Building capacity is limited to one third. The only current adult user in the arena is the Inisville Eagles. The club and their league require that all participants and spectators provide proof of vaccination. And they're only in the arena one evening per week right now for for practice. Once adult gameplay convent commences in mid October, after we put the second ice sheet in revisions may be required to move towards the exist restrictions exemption program in order to allow those adult games and adult recreation hockey to proceed. The restrictions exemption program requires the provision of proof of vaccination, negative COVID test or proof of a medical exemption for all individuals entering the facility. Twelve, twelve and over for spectators or eighteen and over for participants. Implementation of the REP program would also allow operation of the concession to commence. So right now, the concession can't operate as it's deemed in person dining. So right now, we have at the arena, we've been in contact with the Eagles and minor hockey as well. I spoke to both the men's Golden Eagles and the men's rec hockey league last week. Those adult groups do hope to get back into the to the facility in October. So I think we'll continue to monitor what comes out of the province. Because there does seem to be a bit of a gray area on sort of larger recreation facilities or where there's multiple user groups. But for right now, we're doing, we aren't doing any of the restrictions exemption programs at the arena. So for the Aquatic Center, Aquatic Center programming is continuing with masking and distancing requirements in all spaces outside the pool and pool deck. Youth programming is not impacted and no proof of vaccination is required for participants under eighteen years of age. Adults and mixed adult youth programming such as aquafit, lane swim, public swim or private rentals does require proof of vaccination, negative test or exemption to participate for those over the age of eighteen. So we have kind of just provided a breakdown of the various uses and what would be required. We have made the provision with lessons that there are, so there's no restrictions on the participants. Spectators are discouraged. However, parents of children eight years of age or under may be permitted into the facility without providing proof of vaccination or a negative test in order to support the child preparing for the lessons. But again, all spectators required to remain masked and physically distanced. We sort of came to that as our our best approach. A lot of the messaging from the province coming out has encouraged that we shouldn't be creating barriers for youth taking part in activities. So, you know, we're trying our best to implement these restrictions while still allowing as many people as possible to to utilize the facility, especially those eighteen and below. So if there's any questions or thoughts, I'm happy to try to answer. I should have them memorized by now.
Any discussion?
Your worship, through to Director Jenkins, I assuming water polo and kayak are eighteen eight eighteen years of age and over, or is it a mixed?
Um, water polo is primarily youth.
Okay.
The kayak polo is is a mix.
Okay, so water pole, they can do the activity. Okay.
Yeah, anyone under eighteen that's taking part in the activity.
But a parent cannot.
Yeah, we're discouraging spectators at this. Yeah.
Okay, so question, do you know, have you done some research in other areas? Of course, we're getting some correspondence claiming that other communities are different. And I don't believe that they are like I know Black Falls, for example, is basically, well, they've they've stopped the adult programming, right? They're not doing, they're not allowing anybody in.
The pool's outdoors as well, so I'm not sure how much usage. They're getting there right now. Because that's essentially our other option is to say, yep, we don't need any proof of vaccination, but that means there's no public swimming. There's no aquafit. There's none of those those adult opportunities to get in the pool. So.
No, I think you've done the right thing going this route. Thank you.
Okay, someone prepared to make a motion that we accept this report for information.
Also move.
Thank you, Constable Reber. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. All right. RFD regarding the energy management investment Canada grant. Director Jenkins.
So I think I think you guys have already made the motion as part of that presentation. So unless there's, you know, some further questions about the the full text of the report is included in your agenda. If there's any any questions there, but we will be yeah, starting to move forward, looking closer into the financing and finalizing the scope of the project. So that when we come back for budget in November, we have that identified as a specific item.
So you're happy, Mr. CEO with that? Previous motion?
Yes, thank you.
In this regard, okay. Thank you. Okay. And do you want to go on to correspondence?
Your worship. Yes, through to CEO Becker regarding the code of conduct. I see there's some correspondence here from the town of Sundry that feels that that they still need to continue with mandatory code of conduct. What's the history on that? I I think I read somewhere that the province is pushing that it's the code of conduct may not be mandatory and it's optional. My.
First, with Councilor Harrison, I haven't seen anything formal from AUM. I do understand municipal fairs is looking at considering adjusting the MGA in regards to requirements of municipal code of conduct. So I don't have a lot of the data of what they're suggesting to change. Maybe other council members do. I have not seen that material. I do understand that they're looking at lessening the the requirements of of code of conduct bylaws for municipalities.
Your worship, through to Councilor here, and my my understanding is that they want to eliminate. There's discussions around eliminate the requirement of having a code of conduct. But there's many municipalities who are saying, well, we would still have one anyway, but I not sure, I thought AUM had kind of been on top of this topic a little bit, but maybe mistaken.
We'll certainly look into that. And if there's any additional information, I will certainly forward that out to you immediately.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on those correspondence? If not, would someone like to move accept these for information?
I'd so move your worship that we accept for information.
Thank you, Constable Harrison. All in favor of the motion? Carrie. Round the table, Constable Hill.
Thank you, worship. Don't really have much to add today. Does look like obviously on our main entryway, we're getting some really nice flower retaining wall beds built. They look like they're coming along real nice. The weather's finally cooperating. So yeah, it's gonna be exciting to see what what gets planted in them next season. So other than that, your worship, nothing more to add. Thank you. Okay.
So last week I participated in the Red Deer River Group Municipal User Group. Both the exec and the general meetings, they have chosen to offer a position to the new executive. Director. And I guess I won't. It's not secret, but I'm not going to elaborate until I hear that they've accepted, but that will replace Keith Rider, who's occupied that position since their inception. I attended the mayor's forum, which was interesting. Do have a question to Director Kennedy, primarily the pedestrian crossing by the white rock. Do we have an update when that might get underway? I remember October was the last.
Yeah, the last update we had is it will be completed in October. I believe they're doing some some work on the wiring and programming right now.
Okay, thank you. And I intend to attend the police and safe community joint meeting this week. And the Saturday domestic violence as the deputy mayor. One other question, I guess, through to Director Vickers. Because of the COVID and everything, are we doing anything different with election provisions into some of the seniors facilities, et cetera? What's this guy's thing?
Um, yes, so Venice actually contacted all of the senior centers, so Sunset Manor, Autumn Grove and the one over by John's Lake.
Yeah.
And they have all asked for special ballots, so there's going to be over, I think, around two hundred special ballots going out to those places. So they won't even need to come vote. We'll provide the ballots to the facility. They will help them vote and then we'll go pick up all the ballots and and bring them back.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Constable Berkeley.
Yeah, I had MPC Economic Development Task Force last week, and then this week the Police and Safe Community Committee meeting on Thursday.
Constable Reber. Thought you forgot my name there. I I guess I haven't been here for a while. So since I was last here, I attended the Historical Village Meeting. I did some barbecue at the Library Learning Center for the presentations. Then went to have had a small vacation. Didn't see any, only saw one fire in B C. But that's because it was foggy on the way out and raining on the way home, so. We did have a joint use meeting scheduled, but it was canceled because it was the morning after all the changes came down from the province. I attended the Parkland Regional Library Meeting and then the Inisville Public Library Meeting. I worked behind the scenes at the mayor's forum and then we had a Transportation Committee meeting. The results of which you just saw. the results of which you just saw. And I'll be attending the joint meeting on Thursday and then I have a question for Director Kennedy. I need to put my trailer away soon and I don't see any paving at the RV dump site yet. I thought that was in this year's capital. The ramps at the RV dump.
Yeah, that's one item we never got to this year. It was carryover by the end of the year, but, um, what was, it was tasked to be done this fall, but it never got done. It will be carried over next year again.
Thank you, your worship. I also attended, uh, the mayor's forum, uh, via Zoom. Uh, the Economic Task Force Advisory Committee meeting, a very good meeting, very engaging. And it's been one of the longest I've been at, it was close to four hours by the time that we, we got out of there. So it was a pretty intense meeting, but I think the outcomes were, were, were quite good. I'll be attending the policing and safety meeting now this upcoming Thursday. And I see that there's been some painting, some, some artwork being done on some of the sidewalks around town and I think that's through Recreation and Culture and Karen Bradbury. And I guess we stay tuned for the announcements, but it looks, uh, from what I saw, it looked pretty good, so.
I guess, so it's actually through F R N and the Day Home Society, Karen's, Karen's coordinating it, but that's who's actually doing it.
Oh, okay, well, I, I stand to be corrected then, but it looks really good and I understand there's going to be more around the community, so. Uh, stay tuned for that, that's all I have, your worship.
I forgot. I also attended that, uh, youth concert music at Centennial Park and that was really amazing. I have a feeling will be, or council will be, uh, looked at to see if, do more of that in the future, it was, it was really good.
Okay, I, to, uh, intend to attend the policing, uh, committee on Thursday as well, but, uh, I've been actually the acting chairman of the, the Mountain View Water Commission. Uh, in the absence of our previous president who is, or chairman has, has moved on to, to an employment, uh, task at, at the plant. During the most recent, uh, COVID, I guess announcements and, and restrictions, uh, the commission has gone, gone very strict on, uh, accessibility to the, to the plant and, and that there's no intermingling even with maintenance staff and the operations staff to, to avoid, cross-contamination, but with staff, but, uh, it's going very well, but, um, running it very tight. The, uh, the wastewater commission as, uh, we're in the process of, uh, of, uh, choosing a new auditor, so we're evaluating or, or trying to make a decision on a, on a new auditor for the operation, so, uh, it's been busy that way. I don't think there was anything else I had. Nope. Quickly go around the floor, uh, Stephen, how's your, uh, schedule, are you done for the year or?
Obviously, I, I've missed one, but, uh, everything else is going well, Thirty Seventh Street's, uh, concrete's going down, probably to the mall. I'm getting the curb work done, um, I think overall project wise, it's going quite well with the businesses. Um, and then, yeah, the pads or the planters are, are going in quite nice as well, so it's about all I have left for this year.
What else is going to be, are they going to try and get done this fall in that entranceway, just the platters?
Yeah, just the planters, uh, planting will be carried over.
There's going to be some stuff on the other side of the street too, wasn't there?
No, that's a phase, be phase three.
Okay, yes, okay. Nothing. All right. Megan? No, nothing. Kim, you're good. Are things in the audience, are there any questions? As a, as a candidate, you got to be interested and you must have some questions, which? Oh, you certainly made a good, uh, attempt to make yourself familiar, it's good to see you here. Gary, I guess we're going to talk to you later, so. Vanessa, anything? And Kara, no?
All right, just one more thing, I'm sorry, your worship, just in regards to Dan's retirement party or farewell, I guess, on Wednesday from, uh, twelve till two, um, encourage everybody to come down and, and have a farewell to,
Yeah.
to a very long, uh, time-serving employee.
Just with that, uh, your worship, uh, we are closing the office from twelve to two, um, in recognition of that.
Okay.
Up down.
All right. Upcoming events, just. Now, anything there that you're interested in, I don't see, other than the A and P and the fourth is canceled, right?
Have a question, your worship.
Yes.
I think we published in the paper previously, the events votes for the ninth and the sixteenth were eight to four. Are they ten to four or eight to four?
So they are eight to four, they were put in the utility insert as eight to four and.
Eight to four.
But it's ten to four.
Oh. This was about to take it away wrong again, okay, thank you.
Ten o'clock.
Ten to four.
Okay. I guess, uh, there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to go in camera.
Worship, I would make the motion to move in camera.
Thank you, Constable Hill, all in favor? Carrie, we take a couple, thanks. Take a couple minutes break.